All right, everyone. Thanks so much for joining. I'm going to get us started. I'm Caroline with Chalk Beat. I'd love to start just by showing a quick video. We know it's hard to figure out exactly what district you're in. We've tried to make that easy for you with a video from Kirsten Cheers. So I'm going to play it really fast and then we'll get started with our evening.
It's a quick video guide to help you find your Shelby County School Board District. You can easily access this information from any computer and even your phone. First, log into ShelbyVote.com. Be sure to type in ShelbyVote.com and not dot com. This is the Shelby County Election Commission site. It has a bunch of information and updates to better support you as a Shelby County voter. But that's a video for another time. Click on the menu and then select voters. Scroll down to what districts am I in? And select that. Here you'll see simple instructions on how to easily use this software. Click on the hyperlink below the instruction. Wait for the page to load completely. Now, at the top of the page, enter your address and city name. We'll use a house I found on Zillow that's for sale. Click on your address. Now, here's a trick that helps me. Click on the X in the box, then zoom in. Click on the black dot and another blue bar will pop up. Look for the one of two. Click on the blue bar. Then click on the arrow in the top right corner. And there you go. You can see that this address lives in Shelby County School District 5. Now, click at the bottom, Complete Election Details. And it'll direct you to more voter information. Select the link that says County General and State Federal Primary. Select key dates, and at the top left corner, you'll see a list of Shelby County School Board seats that are up for election this year. That's it. Happy voting.
All right, everyone. We're so grateful you're here. I'm Caroline from Chalk Beat. This is the second installment in our SES Board Candidate Forum series. The first one is now in video form that we'll send along in this chat for you to watch at a later time. We're excited to hear from districts 5 and 7 tonight. I'm going to go over a couple of quick notes of housekeeping. First of all, audience members, thank you so much for being on this call. We see you trickling in. Please use the Q and A box, which if you're on a desktop should be in the bottom right corner of your screen. Use the Q and A box to submit questions to the candidates. We're going to have a time later in the evening for audience Q and A, and that portion will actually be moderated by a student. So we're looking forward to that. Audience members, we're not going to have time tonight for the Raise Your Hand function. So don't use that. However, you can use the chat box for anything that comes up that's non-question related. So that's not a question for the candidate. So if you have technology issues or having trouble hearing messages in the chat box, my colleague Susan and I will be in there watching for your comments. Please keep in mind that that is a public space. This is a public forum. So don't write things that you normally wouldn't say out loud in a public space or at a public forum. We'd appreciate it, and we will jump in if we need to on that. First of all, we'd love to get a feel for who's in the room. So we're going to take a couple of quick moments to go through a poll for attendees and panelists who are on the call. So I just launched it. You shouldn't see it pop up on your screen. Take a couple of quick seconds to fill that out, and we'll get started with our evening. Those just joining, you should see a poll up on your screen. Welcome. Take a few quick seconds. I'm going to end it here. We'll see who's represented. All right, so we've got some parents, got a student in the house, teachers, school administrator, of course, our school board candidates. Got quite a bit of other, so we'll have to have a time later to hear from where people are or just maybe write in the chat if you want to introduce yourself, attendees. District 5 is very represented. And for those who said you don't know, well, we have a video for that, so you can watch that later. All right, I'm going to stop sharing. Thanks for doing that. We'll have time for a little bit more interaction later. And I'm going to hand it over to Bureau Chief Jacinthia Jones.
Good evening and welcome to Chalk Beat's 2020 Shelby County Schools Board Forum Part 2. I'm Jacinthia Jones, Bureau Chief for Chalk Beat Tennessee, a nonprofit news organization committed to covering education equity in Memphis and Tennessee because we believe that every child deserves an excellent education. With me tonight is Caroline Baumann, Community Engagement Strategist for Chalk Beat, and Laura Faith Cabetta, Education Reporter, covering SES for Chalk Beat and your moderator tonight. Tonight's forum will feature in District 5 Paul Evelyn Allen, April Guater, Shaleah Harris, and Scott McCormick. In District 7, Miska Clay Bibbs. Thank you to our partners MICA, Memphis Interfaith Coalition for Action and Hope, and the National Civil Rights Museum for helping make these forums possible. I would also like to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate in this conversation tonight and for their interest and willingness in serving on the board. And I would especially like to thank all of you, our parents, teachers, and interested voters for tuning in tonight. And a quick reminder. Oh, I'm sorry. Ahead of tonight's forum, our candidates answered a questionnaire on a number of issues affecting our schools. We'll be emailing you their responses and our voter guide later. The ground rules for tonight. For the first part of the forum, candidates will be asked a series of questions in which they will be asked to rank their answers. The audience can also participate in this portion. Candidates will have one minute to explain their answers. For the moderated portion of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes to respond to questions. The questions were not provided to the candidates in advance, although they were given a list of broad topics that might be addressed. Candidates, please be respectful of the time so that we can address as many issues as possible. I'll be your timekeeper and will alert you when your time is up. At that time, you may complete your sentence, but please do not continue on. At the end of our moderated question period, we will open up the forum to audience questions that can be submitted via the Q and A box on Zoom and in the comments on our Facebook Live video. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to answer these questions. The purpose of tonight's forum is to introduce candidates to voters and allow them to share their thoughts and strategies about key issues facing the district. It is not a debate, so there will be no rebuttals or personal attacks against other candidates. As such, the moderator may interrupt candidates to maintain decorum. The moderator may also interrupt candidates to clarify any questions or solicit further explanation on an answer. This forum is being recorded and will be available for viewing on Chalk Beat, on Chalk Beat Tennessee's YouTube pages and later on our website at tn.chalkbeat.org. We're also broadcasting this live on our Facebook page and encourage you to share the Facebook Live video with your friends who couldn't be here. I believe that's all for now, and we're ready to begin tonight's forum. Over to you, Laura.
All right, everybody. Hello and welcome. We're going to move into the first section of our forum, which, as Jacinthia mentioned, is just quick questions that will be similar to that poll format that we just did to get a feel for who's in the room. And the audience and the candidates can both participate in that. So we'll open the poll, wait for people to respond, and candidates will be able to tell and explain their answer for one minute if they so choose to. And then we'll reveal the answers from everyone. So go ahead and take a quick second and enter the first question, which I'll read for the Facebook audience. What is one issue in Shelby County education that you think does not get enough priority or attention? The choices are student expulsions and suspensions, teacher retention, student mental health supports, disparities in access to technology, and school building maintenance. All right, I've got all sorts of answers coming in. All right, so what we're going to do now, candidates, if you want to share and explain your answer, you can use the Raise Your Hand function, and I will call on you, and then we'll share the poll results with everyone. All right, Ms. Harris, I see your hand. You can go ahead.
I chose teacher retention because I don't think we're having enough conversation about that as of recent. I think that the process of how we recruit teachers and how we retain them, I think we're missing some pieces there. I think we're missing one funding for our educators, something to draw teachers in to want to be in the profession. And two, once they get into the profession, how are we providing them with the resources that they need to continue to do their work in the classroom successfully? So I definitely think that's a conversation that we're not having enough.
All right, thank you so much. April, you're next.
Thank you. I chose the mental health option. Although I believe that the student expulsion and suspension, which leads to the school-to-prison pipeline, which we all know funnels our students in the third grade, I do think that's an issue that needs to be addressed. But I think if we look at the root cause, which are our mental health supports, we really need to look at how we are staffing our school counselors as well as our school psychologists. Currently, right now in the district, there is one school psychologist per 10 to 15 schools. We need to make sure that we have accessibility if we're going in this virtual model to make sure that we do something like office hours or we do a virtual call so that parents and students have access to guidance counselors and school psychologists so that they will be able to get the help that they need at the time or in the conference of their own home. Thank you.
Okay, Scott?
Thank you. I chose school building maintenance. We have over 180 school buildings that have deferred maintenance. And our deferred maintenance right now is roughly $490 million. And this upcoming year, the county commission provided us with $35 million for capital improvement. We're never going to tackle $490 million, $35 million a year. We will incur more deferred maintenance than we repair on that number. I always put it like it's basically like paying the minimum on your credit card. And we really need to go to the state, and the state really needs to pony up and help us close facilities that are beyond repair and build state-of-the-art facilities that take buildings that we have with leaky roofs and windows rotting and fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, you're next.
Hello. I chose the mental health component for students. Over the years, when I taught, I saw a lot of children who fell between the cracks as far as their academic advancements were concerned because they weren't getting the mental health services that they need. They weren't being identified, therefore, where the school system could help them. And those children who lagged behind ended up staying behind. And I truly believe if we can get the children the services they need early enough, maintain those services, we can get the children caught up to where they need to be. Thank you.
Great. And last is Miska. Go ahead.
Thanks, Laura, for the question. You know, I am definitely in agreement with student mental health issues. I think number one is the fact that often those are the last things that we budget for, and most often is the first thing that has to be cut. The reality of it is until we recognize that we have to support the whole child, we won't be successful. I am very thankful, though, that during this COVID-19 time period, we were able to add in some mental health support during having two lines that families can call during this process. But it just really shows you how important it is in order for us to offer wraparound services. So definitely student mental health.
Okay, great. So now we're going to show what everyone put into the poll. Looks like the most common answer was student mental health supports, which was mentioned several times here. So thank you for participating in that. We have one more poll question that we're going to do. It should be popping up on your screen here. And I'll read it for our Facebook audience that isn't on the Zoom call. Who has the most impact on a child's education? The options are parents, teachers, district management, county government, and state government. I'll give you a few seconds to go ahead and submit your answer. And then, just like we did, we'll have candidates give their answer and explanation for a minute. All right, Scott, I see your hand. Go ahead and share your answer. You have one minute.
I'm having one of those senior moments. Oh, I'm sorry. Parents. I chose parent because I have witnessed firsthand, and I am blessed in my district with a lot of our schools have terrific parental involvement. And it really helps the children in their classrooms and with their studies. And parents that are involved and come to the school for the different events and support their children, it just has a tremendous effect on the child's ability to learn and participate. Thank you.
Okay, Shaleah, you're next.
I chose county government because here in Shelby County, our county commissioners approve the budget for the school district. Once that budget is approved, those dollars are determined what goes into the classroom, which directly affects the teachers and directly affects the children, which gives the parents quality options. So the county government controls the budget, which overall controls the budget, the funding, sorry.
Miska, you're next.
Thanks, Laura. So for me, I chose parent. As a parent of a graduating senior this year, I have reflected a lot around what it has taken to move him from pre-K on up to his senior year. And the reality of it is, I was, as well as his father, the first person that he relied on regarding what it meant to be a great person. The reality of it is, as a parent, I was often a partner with his teachers. And I think looking at it from that standpoint is the fact that's how we make our kids successful. Parents have to be partners with teachers and then as well as advocate for our students on a regular basis. So definitely parent for sure.
Ms. Allen, you can go ahead.
Thank you. I chose parents also. Over my years in the classroom, I saw the difference between a child who had strong parental support or family support in their education and showed up for their programs and showed up for their awards and showed up for anything the school had going on. And as long as education is a priority in the household the child comes from, the child knows to make education a priority also. So I chose parent support. Thank you.
All right, and last but not least, April.
I almost definitely believe our parents are our children's first teacher. However, I did choose teacher, and I'm a little biased, being an active educator. I oftentimes think of my father, who was an educator, but he was also very instrumental in my academic success. But it was that partnership that Miska talked about, with his relationship, not just with my teachers, but with my school administrators, with the PTO. And I also think about how the teachers really helped him get those resources. Hey, I think you should put her in this program, a program that he would not have known about if it wasn't for my teacher saying, hey, you need to take her out of this school and put her in this optional program. Put her in this capital program, it'll be a little bit more challenging. So I do think that our teachers help our parents steer them in the direction to help them find the best possibilities and opportunities for our student.
All righty. Okay, so we have what everyone else also put in, and looks like the most common answer, which reflects what our candidates said, is parents with other answers there as well. All right, well, thank you all for doing that. Now, for the next section, we're going to be asking a few questions from different categories of topics. And each candidate will have two minutes to respond. If they want to, you don't have to answer each question if you don't want to. Again, we'll be using that Raise Your Hand feature. And for attendees, if there's something that is said that you want to amen or you know, kind of have a question about, you can feel free to put that in the chat or on Facebook. You can put that in the comment section. And then after that, we'll go into our intermission. So for the first question, what's on top of mind for everyone right now is how we're going to go back to school in the midst of a pandemic. It's a lot. And what we're hoping to hear from you all is what policies do you think should be modified to accommodate the unusual nature of the upcoming school year? All right, Ms. Allen, I see your hand. You can go.
Well, I've taken the time to read the 36-page document for the reentry of our schools and the policies that are already being adjusted, such as reentry, taking the children's temperatures, cleaning the schools, things that we normally didn't have to do at the beginning of the school year, even adding technology. Those policies in terms of us doing traditional school and what we need to do now to get through this pandemic, start our new normal. I think the district has done an amazing job with putting together a program whereby we can start a new normal. So I think that what's going on in terms of policies for cleanliness and whatnot, because that has long been a problem in the district in terms of having cleaning supplies and sterilization and whatnot. And the new plan seems to be one that has already thought that out and made provisions for it. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Harris, you can go next.
Yes. Well, as a former educator, I would have liked to see more options for the teachers. I know within the plan it has some really good bones. I think it's a really great start for us to have something. But I would like to see more options for the teachers. I know that it's going to be almost impossible to address every single scenario. But we do have educators that are parents as well. We want to make sure that we are providing them with safe options as well.
Can you explain, what exactly do you think should change as far as policies for teachers?
Well, we need to give teachers the options like we have families. Whether a teacher wants to go completely virtual or if they want to go back into the classroom, that needs to be solidified.
Okay, thank you for that. You can go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. You know, we've been working on the reentry program as a board along with the administration. And you know, it's up the most important thing in coming back. However, we end up, and one of the letters is flexible. We have to remain flexible because we don't really know where this pandemic is going right now. But we have to be concerned about the safety of our students and our teachers and our administrators in the school, our employees. And that's the policy that, in my mind, is the most important, which is safety first and make sure that we are being prudent in our decisions and we don't risk the health of any of our students, any of our teachers, or any of our personnel. Thank you.
Okay, and specifically with safety policy, I guess, what were you thinking there?
Well, you know, there's still a lot of unanswered questions. For example, what happens if a teacher is diagnosed, tests positive? You know, does a substitute teacher come in? Does that classroom have to go on lockdown for 14 days? What happens if the student shows up without a mask? How is that going to be handled? Will masks be there to be provided? I mean, you know, I can't tell you how many times when I was in school, I forgot my homework and I forgot my textbook. And I can just imagine it's going to be an issue with children showing up or students showing up without masks. You know, the cleanliness in the classroom. The students are going to eat their lunch in the classroom. Well, who's going to clean up after the students eat? Is that going to fall on the teacher? And I don't think that's an unfair burden on the teacher. And does the teacher still going to get her 30 minutes of time that she gets? And that's state law. I don't think the law has changed. So there's a lot of just unanswered kind of logistical questions that we still have to consider. And that's where I say that we have to consider those with safety being on the forefront.
Okay, so basically, those are the broadcasters that you'd like to see and then kind of figure it out once the school year gets going.
I mean, we're not going to have an answer totally when we're ready to start school. There's going to be a lot of issues that are going to come up as we go along, and we need to be prepared to address those issues and address them swiftly. And that's what I'm thinking. If we have safety as our main goal.
Got it, yeah.
That's what we should proceed.
Miska, you can go ahead.
Thanks, Laura. Honestly, I would say it's not really policy per se, but it's more so around procedure. I think, you know, everyone has referenced some really great things that I would definitely think about when it comes to teachers, making sure that we're communicating with them in the best way possible and understanding what their options are. When it comes to parents, being very clear on what it means to have online school versus what it means to be inside of a school building. The other aspect is just safety. You know, I think when I think about all of this, when it's time for us to reenter school August 31st, just how safe, because I think we have to be mindful of the students, the teachers, the administration, as well as the parents. Because if something happens in the building, it will affect everyone because the child will go home, then they will touch their families at home. The teacher will go home and touch their families at home. The child and the teacher will then touch everybody else in the building, will may come in contact. So for me, great plan, great foundation. I think the other reality of it is just procedures around understanding flexibility. We know that we have to be flexible because things are changing daily. Safety for me, out the gate, is the first and foremost thing I think about with this plan. The numbers are going up every day. The numbers are not decreasing at all. So we have to be nimble when it comes to this plan. And so for me, it's more about procedures and then versus a policy. So I think of that. And luckily, my colleagues have been very responsive around what it looks like, and I expect for that to be the same case as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. April?
Thank you, Laura. Your follow-up question to Scott was actually what I wanted to hit on. I think everybody said some pretty awesome things. I think safety is most definitely paramount. I did want to talk about the policies to be modified around educator support, which is one of the reasons why I'm running. What does it look like if an educator's husband gets COVID? Will she be able to stay at home and nurture him and take care of him? What about teachers who take care of their parents? What does policy look like for that? Will they have to use their sick days? Or will there be something in the plan to allow for them to use paid time off that doesn't go into their sick days? Thinking about myself last year as an educator, I got the flu, you know, and I had to use all of my sick days to recuperate from the flu. So would that happen to our educators if they get COVID-19? What plans or policies are surrounding that? Or if their kids, you know, get it? Because a lot of our teachers have kids in the district and are choosing the in-person option. So what does that look like for that? And so I do want to ask about that. There is a few ambiguous verbiage in the reopening plan around that. I think the foundation to Miska's point was really clear, but the logistics on the back end, thinking through those various scenarios, is something that we really need to ask those really hard questions about right now, about the safety, about our community, not just our teachers, but our students and our parents. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, candidates. The next question has to do with testing. So the superintendent recently asked the governor not to hold TN Ready testing against students and teachers this school year. So the superintendent recently asked the governor not to hold T and Ready testing against students and teachers this school year. How do you think student achievement and progress should be measured, given our current times? April, you can go.
Yeah, I don't want to hog up all their time, but I'm passionate about our kids in the district, especially District Five. I agree with the superintendent. I think our kids are tested so often and so much. As educators, oh, turn around, I'm tested, oh, turn around, I'm tested. And it's like, no, when can I teach? When can I really teach this curriculum? When can I teach the curriculum that I've studied and prepared for? And think about innovative and engaging ways to get my kids invested in the curriculum before I have to teach them all these different things and all these different standards to go to a test, which may not, they may not be able to use it in the future. So I think we have the data. I think that the data is there. We need to actually use the data and figure out how we can use it to meet the needs that they specifically have, those skill deficit areas and close those opportunity gaps, close those academic gaps. And to your question of what do we use if we don't use tests? We should use screeners. They have a lower bar for testing, kids are not getting anxiety, teachers are not getting anxiety for screeners. Because this is just measuring where you are right now. There is no high-stakes testing where kids have to figure, oh, no, if I don't get it, my teacher will get in trouble. Or a teacher thinking, oh, I get fired if I don't have high test scores. So I think we need to start thinking about a universal screener that's applicable to all schools in our district. So they are students feel comfortable taking it and our teachers feel comfortable in management, knowing that there is not punitive actions that follow. So thank you.
All right, Shalila?
I agree. I think this year especially, testing should be the last thing on our mind. In replacement of that, I think that every student should have an individualized learning plan. Something that teachers and families can see every quarter. It should be measured on academics, mental, social, and physical support. So just to make sure that we track our students, all students should have an ILP for the school year and should be tracked every quarter instead of testing.
Okay, Scott?
Thank you. My opinion, Tennessee, the testing Ten Ready has been a failure from the start. I mean, it ran into the vendors that we used. I think when the first failure that we had, this could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we invested somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars just to prepare for the test. Only to have the test voided because of technical issues that they couldn't get the test across the state. I think there's only been one year that we've actually used the data from the Ten Ready, I mean, from the, yeah, Ten Ready test. And it's my understanding that teachers aren't allowed to see the test. So they don't, they're not given information of where their students need to go and how their students, where their deficits are and how to catch them up if they're behind in a certain area. The number one issue I always hear with teachers is we need to cut out testing. We're just teaching for the test. And I think April made the point of teachers don't feel like they're given the empowerment to embold their students in a particular way because we have this little test and this script that we have to stick to. Teachers need more autonomy to teach. Yes, there's guidelines that they need to stay within. But they need to be able to use their talents and their skills that they developed through their education and through their experiences to be able to connect with our students. Thank you.
Paul, you can go.
Thank you. Everyone has made absolutely excellent points concerning the assessment part of the school year. The district is introducing a new curriculum and new teaching and learning format. It stands to reason that we need to monitor and just and implement these new programs. As such, standardized testing needs to be delayed one more year. And with being able to evaluate this new curriculum, I think we're going to need a new measurement tool anyway. And we need to look at what is out there and make sure that whatever it is we're teaching is what is actually being evaluated. So many times I've heard teachers say, what I actually teach, I have to stop teaching, then start teaching for the test. And the two aren't correlating. So this will give us an opportunity moving into a new curriculum and a new way of teaching and learning where we can make sure that whatever our assessment tool is, it is one that lines up with it. So we're not jumping from one thing to another, they are all correlated and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Ms. Scott.
Thanks, Laura. So I agree with everything that's been stated already. The reality of it is, testing is used in such a punitive manner. And that's the unfortunate part about it is, it would be different if we were having a conversation around testing in the way of like, it's just used to help guide us around where we are, help guide us around how teachers can help support. But as long as testing is considered to be something so punitive, whether for the child, the teacher, as well as the school overall, we cannot continue to use testing in that same way. So as far as the replacement, I, you know, be honest, I've heard some great ideas here today around a universal screener. You know, I've heard from teachers in the past around pre and post, you know, something that's created by the district. Whichever way it goes, it will give us an opportunity as a district to create something for ourselves that we can use as a guiding post versus using testing in such a punitive way. And I am all for that.
Okay, thank you all for those answers. The next question is, actually, it's inspired by a student group that we met with a couple of weeks ago to get their thoughts on what we should ask candidates. It says, "Students will return to school this fall in the midst of a pandemic, a recession that's led to more food and housing insecurities, and a national awakening about police brutality and systemic racism. What additional mental health resources do you support or do you think will be needed for students?" Okay, Paul, you can go. And you do the unmute yourself. That's okay, we all do it.
Hey, you got me? Okay, the SES website has a social emotional learning page where students and their families can contact social workers and counselors around the clock for resources and assistance in social and emotional concerns. It also has a list of a host of local mental health and support agencies. One of the things that I constantly saw during my time in the classroom was overworked guidance counselors. The thought that there are maybe six hundred children to one counselor and you have every manner of need that the children have, whether it is emotional, financial, or we're talking about children who've been abused, children who have been neglected, children who maybe have mental illnesses or special needs. And this one person is supposed to address every need that the child has. And one of the things I think that we should do is make sure that we try to even out those numbers and bring in more professional school counselors as well as our paraprofessionals within the, within the community. Those people who are social workers and those people who are speech therapists and all of the other paraprofessionals that we formerly had in abundance. And as the years have gone by, they just triple down. And we end up having these underserved children who fall between the cracks because we're not meeting the needs we're really supposed to be meeting for them. So I would like to see not only, like I said, the district is addressing it through their social emotional learning page in one way where you've got twenty-four hour people that you can call. But in terms of them needing one-on-one services, I really think that the district needs to think about bringing in more people who have those credentials and those skills to help our children and not burn out the counselors that we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. April?
Thank you. I didn't know if my hand was working because I had a little piece I wanted to add to the last question. That's why I raised my hand, I felt like I was back in school, which felt good because I missed my kids. But anyhow, I was thinking, to answer this question, I was thinking about to Paul's point. I think she made a great point about how the ratio from students to guidance councils is alarmingly, alarmingly high. I'm thinking about our ACES, our Ever Childhood Experiences. We know, I read an article not too long ago, I don't remember the exact number. But what I do know is that Memphis had one of the highest ACES scores in the country. And ACES is Ever Childhood Experiences. So what this means is there are children here in Memphis are at an alarming rate getting more experience with physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, physical and emotional neglect. They have mental illness or they seen people be victims to domestic violence or parents who experienced divorces. And so we need to make sure that there is a social emotional learning curriculum that is universal across the district and that we are using restorative justice with fidelity and that we are creating spaces that are safe for kids to come in and say, hey, I saw this happen in my home. Is this normal? Is this right? How can, you know, how can I be healed from this? How can I get support and how can I get help? And just having one person to manage over eight hundred or six hundred kids, that's not realistic. And I think now more than ever, we need to be more realistic with how we are supporting our whole child, our whole students, and giving them those wraparound services to make sure that they can show up and be prepared to learn, not because of everything that happened before they came in those school doors. But when they're there, they know that they are safe and they know that they're going to be supported with the trauma that they're bringing and they will have the tools and the resources to address them so that they can be able to focus on their academics and not have them compartmentalize, oh, I need to focus on this trauma, or, oh, I need to be doing two plus two. They should have to compartmentalize their feelings. Thank you.
And just a note about the previous question, we're just having, for each question, you have one, you know, opportunity to answer. But if we have time at the end, we will allow the opportunity for closing statements. So you can save it for that part if you would like. Scott, you're next.
Thank you. I think that we need to continue to build partnerships. So much is placed on Shelby County schools and we cannot do it alone. I mean, our resources are stretched to the limit. And we have students that desperately need counseling and need help. And, and we do have some partnerships, but we need to create more partnerships so that these issues can be addressed. And a lot of the issues not only need to be addressed with the student, but it also needs to be addressed with the family as a whole. A lot of these issues are coming from the home, you know, environment. And, you know, I think the schools play a great role in identifying children. For example, if a student might come in and show signs that they're being abused and the teacher immediately knows what to do and report it to the authorities. And that's a great opportunity for children to be protected. But it's all, I feel like sometimes it's just all thrown on us, the Shelby County schools, to do everything. And we need help. You know, our dollars are sacred and our resources are thin. And, you know, we need to find other agencies to come in and assist us to help address this need. Thank you.
Ms. Scott?
So I absolutely agree with what has been said already. I will just add the fact that we need stronger partnerships. You know, there's a lot of people out here who are doing the work. But within that, though, we need to be very clear from these partners exactly what it is that we need and how to, just really a direct ask around how they can be supportive. So I think that's the first thing that I think is needed as we move into what it looks like around educating during COVID-19. You know, we did add the mental health lines, you know, as Paul mentioned on the FDL page, all of the additional resources. But I think that's one thing. But it's also being very clear with the community partners around how they can be supportive. Then moving beyond that point, I think we have to spend some time advocating at the state level around funding. The reality of just in a previous question of what I just answered, you know, honestly, social workers and anything that's dealing with the whole child, those are the, you know, first things to get cut. And until the state as a whole realizes the fact that we need those funds, especially in Shelby County, and even if we have to advocate to county commission, who is our, you know, other funder, around why this is so important, we have to do both. It's not an end, you have to do both in order for us to get there. I think the other thing is, I do want to recognize the fact that ACES training has been happening in the district this past school year. So everyone should be trained in ACES. And then as a district, as a board, we voted to be a trauma responsive district. So we're now looking for, for people to actually, when we're back in the building, to actually live that out. But then on the same side of that, being able to live it out in a virtual world, what does that look like? So all of this is important as we move forward in starting school August thirty-first. But at the same time, we have to always work on the dollars in order to support the whole child.
Thank you. And Shalila, and then we'll move on to the next question.
It's hard to go last. I'll try to be a little bit quicker by raising my hand. Everyone has said all of the answers that I wanted to say. So Paul, Ms. Scott, April, Scott, you all have hit some really great points, we need that. I will add this, COVID-19 only pulled back what we have not done. It only revealed our gaps that were already there. So it's nothing new. I don't do a lot of talking on purpose because I'm more focused on the action behind it. We know that our children experience trauma. We know that our teachers experience trauma and our families. We know that it's here. So now what are we going to do when we leave this conversation? We know what needs to be done, let's focus on the action.
Okay, thank you for that. And actually, we have two more questions before we go to intermission. And both of these are, come from students. The first one, what role should law enforcement officers have in schools, if any? Do you support a recent call from students to take sheriff deputies out of schools? All right, Scott, you can go.
I think that we need to come up with a different approach with our resource officers. They should be in the schools, not dressed, you know, in an intimidating way. They should be in the schools as another form of support that we provide the students. There is so much mistrust between students and law enforcement. And I think we need to realize that. And we need to look at our approach and come up with a different way of having that service in our school. And rely more on when there is an incident in the school that law enforcement might be, it might be required that law enforcement attend to, that that person in there has the ability to find, to determine what needs to be done in the school to address the situation. But basically, they should be more like, you know, more of a coaching person than an intimidating factor. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, you can go.
Okay, as a teacher who's worked in schools, I've been there with a full-time school officer. And I've worked in schools that had no school officer at all. And I can say that the school climate and environment determines the need of what sort of security is necessary. I know teachers that are on disability right now as a result of student attacks. I never want students to feel as though they're already a part of the criminal justice system. But I also don't want students or staff left vulnerable to possible violent altercations. We need to look at ways to address the issue, whether it is in the form of plainclothes officers, resource officers, security officers, zero policy, zero tolerance policy concerning violent offenses. I, like I said, it depends on the climate of the school. But absolutely, there needs to be something that is there. Every school is different. I can say that because I did elementary, middle school, and high school. My elementary schools, we didn't need them. Middle schools depended on which middle school. And the same applies to, it depends on which high school you're attending. You have to be cognizant of the climate that you're in and develop a program to make everyone feel safe as it relates to your individual environment in that school. But they're definitely, where it needs to be, it needs to be. And where it doesn't, then you don't have to worry about it. But I would never just want to eliminate them completely because there are a lot of people who have fallen victim to violence in their own schools. Thank you.
All right, Shalila?
I agree. I think that our officers should be in our schools for safety only and not intimidation. I used to be a volunteer literacy teacher at 201 about a year ago. I shouldn't walk into 201 and then walk into one of our schools and it looks the same. That's a I shouldn't walk into two oh one and then walk into one of our schools and it looks the same. That's a problem. Our officers should be there for safety, not intimidation.
And so by that, do you mean that they should be in schools full-time or part-time? Is that, I just want to make sure I understood.
So before talking about safety, they should be there full-time.
Miska, you're next.
A lot of great points have been stated already. I would just say, for me, the main thing is making sure that we're all on the same page of the reason why they're there. You know, I think there is conversation around making them not wear a uniform and how that will come across as less intimidating. Again, I think that's really important. But the main thing, I think, is also at the state level, because it is a state law for them to be be in schools. Then we need to figure out what it is actually that we're advocating at the state level around what it looks like to have a resource officer in school. I think a lot of times laws are made and then across statewide and then they are just pushed down to us. So we have to make sure that we're advocating around what Shelby County schools needs and why we need what we need. So that's definitely, again, going back to the end, while you're making changes locally, you absolutely have to make the advocate, advocating decisions at the state level. The other thing I think is too, I think Paul actually made a point around they've been, they're just different in every school around why they're there. I think as a district, we then have to do a much greater job and better job around making sure everyone understands their purpose in the building.
Okay, April.
I think everyone made very good points about why school officers, resource officers should be there for safety purposes only and to make sure that there is alignment across the district. What I would like to add to that is that there is funding for those officers being in those schools. Why are we not having the conversations around spending that funding for those offices to be put in towards our counselors? Having more counselors on staff, more we're thinking about, because safety can mean so many things to so many different people. And I think that goes back to making sure that everybody is on the same page and that that there is alignment. But I think that there there is more, counselors can provide more of a nurturing arm than resource officers can do with a forceful hand. And we need to make sure that we are communicating with our students that we care about their safety, but we also care about them being well-versed, getting to their root cause. And that's what we need to make sure that is paramount when we're thinking about funding and where their goals in an equitable manner.
Okay, thank you. And last question before we go to intermission is also inspired by students. How would you describe the state of optional schools in the district? And what reforms, if any, would you support to make the system more equitable? All right, Paul, you can go.
Okay, didn't realize I was that quick. There is an obvious inequity in terms of optional schools within the district. I believe that every neighborhood should offer optional educational opportunities. There are advanced and gifted children in every area of this city. And no parent should have to carpool to get their child to school in order to provide them with an appropriate education. I believe in optional programs. I just think that having just a select few schools where people are sitting out and hoping that they can get in. When I've never understood in all the years that I taught, why can't those programs be offered at every school? And so that every child can just walk to their neighborhood school, get the education that's worthy of them. And we we can stop all of this having to be intense, trying to wait to get in to get our children in a particular school. The gifted children are all over the district. So let's make sure that we serve them in every school that we have. Thank you.
Miska, you can go.
Thanks, Laura. Paul was quick on the draw there with that raised hand because I was getting excited because I love this one. The reality is, right before COVID-19, out of the academic performance committee, we asked for an optional school audit. And that is something that's really important to me around understanding where we are in what it is that's happening, quote unquote, in optional schools. You know, we were not able to move forward with our findings just because they were very general. For me, the reality of it is, and optional itself as the word that's being used, it's a touching point for me. The reality is, every school should have an opportunity to be able to have advanced classes from pre-K through twelfth grade around what it looks like to be an advanced or gifted child. It should be in every school building. So at the gate regarding branding, that's something we need to think about. You know, the word optional, when it comes to optional schools, was created many years ago. So as times have changed, the district has to change regarding that. You know, I am proud of the fact that as while I've been on the board, we've been able to change Tent City to move it to something everyone has been able to be online regarding trying to pick their school choice. That was one thing, you know, I can't say that it's perfect, but the reality of it is, just an inequity of what Tent City looked like, being able to be a part of, quote unquote, tearing that down was something that was really important for me as a board member. Now let's be, now for me, let's move forward. Let's think about what next step looks like around equity, around making sure that all children have access to advanced classes. So we start, we started the work. And then the other aspect of it is, a lot of these schools are themed. So when we want to make sure if it's a particular thing, school, you're actually responding to the theme in which you've been stated that you're doing. So that's some of the work that was happening right before COVID-19, that was happening at a committee that I co-chair with, a board colleague, I'll be agreeing. And we were getting ready to, you know, really dig deeper into the work. So the conversations are being had. So again, Paul, you were kind of quick on the draw regarding that, but I was excited to be able to share that with everyone.
Okay, yeah, we look forward to seeing that report. Shalea, you're next.
Miska, I mean, you just took half the things I was gonna say, but that's okay. I'll just echo a lot of what you said. I am a true advocate for equity and access for our students. Fortunately, we do have an optional school here in District Five. But if every child in Shelby County schools does not have that same access, then we have more work to do. I am interested in figuring out ways that we can increase quality seats for every school in every district. That should be the focus. It shouldn't be how many optional schools we have or how many choices we have, making sure that every neighborhood school is a high-quality school. That should be the option. That should be the choice. That should be the main focus.
Okay, and Scott?
What everybody else said. You know, access, that's important, that every child, every student has the ability to use their talents in the programs that that we have. I know, and I'm I'm just going to talk about another thing because I think everybody called, covered the optional school. But just this past year, we reevaluated how we pick our students for the CLUE program. And it was really broadened. There was a kind of, I want to say, it's kind of a, you know, if you were the chosen one, you got to be in CLUE. And a lot of people felt like many students were overlooked who had the talent and the ability to participate in CLUE. So we we've changed that program and how we select our our students. So I'm happy to work, that I'm working with my colleagues to make sure that we offer to our students what we have and what to provide them to advance in their education. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now we're going to go to a quick intermission. It'll be about three minutes. Feel free to get up and stretch, get water, go to the bathroom, whatever you need to do. And in the meantime, we're going to hear from, as you can see on this video, the Memphis Jazz Workshop, which is students. And we'll be right back. All right, if y'all could head back to your seats. All right, all right, we've got everyone back now. I'm going to introduce our student moderator, who's going to be sharing the questions that we got from both our Zoom chat and from Facebook. And then each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer and we'll go on from there. And so I want to introduce Brianna Massey. She is the president of the MiFIA club at White Station High School. And she is going to be reading questions. You want to say a little something about yourself and we'll move on from there.
Oh, hi, my name is Brianna Massey. Like Ms. Laura just said, I attend White Station High School. And I am the president of MiFIA club and I'm also a founder of Simply Street Styles, actually. Yeah, thank you for having me, guys.
Tell us about Simply Street Styles.
Oh, yeah, so Simply Street Styles is basically just a comfortable streetwear. So my motto is to be your favorite model, because you know, a lot of people, a lot of kids are influenced by influencers. So I feel like why not be your own personal influencer? So I decided to start my own fashion line business. It's up and running right now. It's it's actually really nice. My Instagram is simplystreetstyles. So, yeah, if you want to go check it out, you might, you know, like even adults can wear it as well.
Wonderful. Okay. If you could read the first question and then anyone, I'm going to call on three candidates per question to answer this so that we can get through as many audience questions as possible. So go ahead. Oh, you're muted, dear. If you could unmute.
My apologies. From Erica, do you have classroom experience? If so, how many years? How has or how would that experience shape you as a board member?
All right, Shalea, you can go.
Yes, Brianna, first I want to say I'm so proud of you. I was a fashion merchandising teacher. That was one of the courses that I taught. I am six feet tall, so hopefully you have some lungs and some of those clothes that you have, and I will be a customer. To answer your question, I was a high school teacher for five years. I taught marketing, I taught fashion design, nutrition, child development, all the C T U courses.
Paul, you can go.
Hi, Brianna. I was a classroom teacher for thirty years. I taught music from pre-K all the way to twelfth grade. I have worked with children of every single age from five to eighteen, some nineteen. And in that time, I began to have a passion and a love for children and education and making sure that they got what they needed so we could send them out in the world to be successful. And so as a school board member, I want to help make policy that will allow that to happen for our children. And so that everyone can have it going on like you, Brianna. Thank you.
All right, so since we have a third one, Shalea, is there something that you wanted to add from your answer?
Second part of the question, I forgot to answer how that experience impacted me now and how it will help me as a school board member. As a teacher, I learned how to how to love outside of myself. When I was in the classroom, that's where I really learned how to to love a child, to love families, to love what I do and to have a passion for what I do and how to advocate, how to advocate on behalf of my students and their families. And it gave me a different perspective on the different external barriers that my students face. And the only reason I left the classroom is to advocate from the outside in. So that's what I'm going to bring to the school board.
Okay, and our third answer, April, we'll move on to the next question.
I'm like, what's going on with this raised hand feature? Because I clicked it. But thank you, Laura. And Brianna, I am so proud of you. And I know your teachers and your parents are so proud of you. This like, just hearing you plug your company, I was like, yes, ma'am, yes, talk about it. And I love that you are at White Station. I am a lover of White Station, so I know that they're still doing some really awesome things with the Spartans. In terms of my classroom experience, I have been in the classroom for the past five years. My first year, I taught ninety students. And so that first year teaching fourth graders, I learned how to build relationships and I learned how to build authentic relationships. I had the parents, like, oh, you ain't finna just call me and hang up and tell me about my child. Like, I learned that very first year teaching, like, no, how are you doing? Like, what do you need? How can I support you? So I learned how to build authentic relationships with people very early on. And I think that's really key and it's really going to help me when elected as a board member to build those relationships with other board members as well as community partners to ensure that we're getting everything that we need for our students to make sure they're super successful and they can dream big and have ambitious and crush goals, just like you, Brianna.
All right, next question.
This is from Facebook. If we have every student with the individual learning plan, who in the building will be responsible for that? I got maybe one actual planning period last year, last year. When are teachers supposed to do additional work at home? This year, I don't feel comfortable bringing home materials home. I don't feel comfortable, sorry, my apologies. I don't feel comfortable bringing school materials home due to COVID-19.
I'll take that one since I did bring it up. What I meant by an individualized learning plan, since we are not advocating for testing this year, we have to have some way to track what our students' needs are and where they are. And in my opinion, that will be the best option. It will rely on the teacher just to keep track of your students, whether they are progressing academically, if there are needs for them, if they need food, if they need some mental health support, we can all put that in the individual individual learning plan.
And Miska.
Thanks. Taking a little bit for me to unmute. Brianna, I just want to say, go Spartans. You have a call that is full of White Station Spartans as graduates. So excited for you and thank you for representing very well tonight. I think, you know, when we look at what it means, and I think to Shalea's point, what she mentioned around having an individualized learning plan, the reality is, this is where we use some of this technology that we're purchasing and have purchased in place. And then that way, the burden is not solely on the teacher. It is on the administrators there as well. And then it also is bumped up because on the central office side, there are people who can see what's happening. If you look at across the the board in each school buildings around what's happening. So that way, all of the burden is on the teacher. I think we definitely need to rely heavily on some of these technology pieces that we've purchased and making sure that all hands on deck regarding it, because it can't just be one person. And it also be something that should be shared with parents. So then that way, everyone, again, is on the same page in order to move the child forward. Thank you.
Okay, and one note before we go to April and then to the next question. There are a lot of questions in the Q and A box candidates. And if we, if you don't get a chance to answer that particular question that we're asking, or if you just want to jump into the Q and A box to answer that, you can go ahead and type in there whenever you feel like it. April, you can go ahead and then we'll move on to the next question.
Thank you, Laura. And I think, Brianna, to that question about individualized education plans, it's really important that we really understand what those are. As a teacher who actually had to create them, they are very tedious and it's a document that you're honored as a teacher to adhere to. And you just can't And you just can't create it on the first day of school. It doesn't work like that. You have to take data points. And in order to get those data points, you have to test kids in order to find out what their skill deficit areas are. And that is what's included in the IEP. And it's important that when you have this IEP and you create it, that you are adhering to it, and there are checks for fidelity for IEPs. So they do take an extensive amount of time. It's not something that just can be created in one day or one month, rather. So it is a lot of weight on teachers. And I think maybe utilizing teacher assistance or also utilizing our guidance councils to help teachers. Just speaking back to my first year experience as educator, when I taught over 90 kids, had, like, about 12 of those kids had IEPs that I was solely responsible for on my own. And that was a lot of work, especially because there's a progress monitoring component that goes to that. And this is where the hard work comes in. That's why we need active educators who know what an IEP is and know the work that it takes to produce one on the board so that we can make the best call for our students.
All right, next question.
Well, the past 10 years, less than 25% of SES students are at reading grade level. Teachers, students, parents, and the community want policies that go back to the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic. And to show growth in these areas, what are specific ways SES can address the issue?
All right, Scott, you can go.
Brianna, I am the last one to say, I'm a proud Spartan. I'm afraid to give you the year. I became a proud Spartan, let's say it was a little while ago. But I'm really impressed with you, and White Station always produces great students. Miska, April, me. Anyway, you know, the literacy is a huge issue for us. We have too many of our students, at the end of third grade, they're not reading on third grade level. And, you know, as the saying goes, it's third grade to fourth grade where you make the transition from learning to read and then reading to learn. We have partnered with some groups. A Rise to Read is a group that comes in and reads to students and helps them along. We have looked at different curriculum to, you know, to bring our students up. We really need, you know, more of our parents. And I know a lot of parents are just in tough situations that they work, and they don't get to spend a lot of time that they can dedicate with their children to read to them. But there are other resources out in the community, and we need to, again, it really boils down to building partnerships. And because it is so important by third grade that our students are reading on a grade level. And that's something I think, you know, we on the board talk about, and we definitely have a priority in making that happen. Thanks.
Paul?
Thank you for that question. The problem we've been having with the reading levels of our students, after talking to many, many teachers, is that they feel that the curriculums that have been chosen do not allow the children to have the full reading experience that they need. A lot of things have been taken out of the curriculum. A lot of the basic principles and foundations of teaching, such as grammar, handwriting, phonics, and things of that nature. And when we, everything new is not improved. And the result has been in children not being able to read and having situations where teachers pass children on, not because they wanted to, but because there were administrative pressures that caused those children to be pushed through so that the data could look good. And so I think as we become more aware of what will happen if we don't get serious, focus, and be honest, be real about what it is we're teaching our children, how we're teaching our children, because curriculum is a passion of mine. What we teach our children, how we teach our children, according to their learning skills, according to their learning levels. I mean, you, one size does not fit all. And that has been the problem with some of our curriculum, thinking that all children can learn everything the same way. And so as we look at curriculum and having resources that help children to learn according to their learning style. I was a musical learner. Some children are a learner who loves manipulative, someone interpersonal. So let's look at the curriculum to make sure that it gives the children what they need and the way that they learn. Thank you.
And April, and then we'll move on to the next question.
I think one of the things the board has been doing really well when it comes to literacy is their third grade commitment. This is one of the reasons why I begged my principal to teach third grade from fourth grade, because I wanted to be the change agent. I wanted to be someone who was stopping and dismantling the school to prison pipeline. In 2019, 24% of our third graders were score proficient on our state test in 10 ready. 24%. And I know that our scholars can do, our students can do so much more. We know our students can learn. We know our students can read. We have to give them the resources, the system up to be successful. Oftentimes, when we think about our reading skills and phonics, we think about it in the kindergarten or in first grade. We need to start introducing those phonics tips to students who maybe are in sixth grade, who are in eighth grade, reading on the kindergarten level, on the first grade level. That is the reality, and we need, that's a brutal fact that we have to address. We know that it's a fact, and now we need to close that gap. So we need to make sure that we're introducing foundational learning skills in other grades so that we're helping them learn how to read. To Scott's point, he said, students are not just learning to read, but they have to come to a point where they're reading to learn, and they can. We just have to provide those resources to them. So we really need to think about teaching students phonics that go beyond those primaries, right?
Okay, great, next question.
This is from Facebook. How many teachers' deaths do we expect this year when we re-enter? How many are acceptable? And how will we handle this if, when it happens? And what about it when a student is seriously ill or passes away? Thank you.
Scott, you can go ahead.
Could you, did you say how many teacher deaths? Brianna, is that what you said?
Yeah, I asked, how many teachers' deaths do we expect this year and when we re-enter?
Well, I go back, well, one, we don't expect any deaths. And how many are acceptable? I mean, zero, absolutely. You know, I go back to what I said and many of the other participants tonight. You know, safety is our main concern. And, you know, we can't afford to have a death of anybody involved in our school system, which is why we have to be so careful in how we do re-enter and restart. Thank you.
Miska? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Shaleah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Miska.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. I was going to ask Brianna to repeat the question, but I think Scott did that for me as well. You know, the reality is, zero is acceptable. Zero is the expectation. When you, as a previous question, I will say, when we talked about safety being first and also being flexible, because we have to be in order to be able to be responsive to the fact that numbers are going up on the daily. And one of the things that I know as a board, we've been talking about is making sure we use data and science as our guiding principles around ratifying any of the decisions that are presented to us by the superintendent. Because our first and foremost goal is to make sure adult students, anyone going into a building, are safe before they go in. And if they can't go in, then we need to make sure that we have a strong plan as to what it looks like if we choose for virtual to happen.
Okay, Shaleah, and then we'll move on to the next question.
The fact that the question was even asked is sad and unfortunate that that's a question from, whether a student or a parent. As I've said before, safety has to be the number one goal at this point. The acceptable number is, of course, none. But that means we have to do our part on accountability to make sure that our educators, families, and students are held safe, are safe.
All right, next question.
This is from Catherine. What can be done about our criminally schools and poor cleanliness standards? Would you like me to repeat it? Did you guys, okay, my apologies. This is from Catherine. What can be done about our criminally schools and poor cleanliness standards?
All right, we'll do Miska, Paul, and then Scott.
Okay, so I want to repeat the question to make sure that I'm answering it correctly. Or it said, what can be done around our school facilities and the poor cleanliness? Okay, great, perfect. The reality of it is, we just had a conversation around what it looks like for our vendors to do cleaning in the school buildings. And if you paid attention, Brianna probably is not listening to committee mini, or board members, board meetings just for fun. But the reality of it is, we did have a strong conversation around what it looked like, those metrics around vendors, and making sure that they understand that if they're being paid to do the work, they have to be held accountable. That is stronger vendor relations on our part and being real strict around what it looks like in expecting the buildings. But then on the flip side, it's also holding those vendors accountable around what it is that they're supposed to do. This topic is always very touchy. You know, I remember a vote probably three, if not maybe four years ago, around our current vendors and not being on the prevailing side. And so we have the vendors that we have now. I take this very seriously. And so the only thing that I could do, since my side didn't win, was to make sure that, always talk about the fact that we have to have strong vendor metrics in place as long as we're using outside people for it. And we have to hold them accountable and also being able to put into their contract. If they don't hit those metrics, then there's some things that they owe us. And there's some things that we won't pay them for if they don't hit the metrics. This is very much a heavily debated subject. Thank you.
All right, Scott, or Paul, and then Scott.
Okay, I think this question is born of personal experience of what people have endured in the schools where there were, there was definitely a lack of cleanliness, a lack of supplies, a lack of security. That, you know, we can go back to a school that, you know, that we just left earlier in the spring, and it was constantly dirty and constantly not in, you know, in ill repair and things of that nature. And I really believe that, as Miska was saying, it is the school board's responsibility to make sure that there are metrics that are set and there are standards that are set for the companies that are contracted so that when there is a problem and it is reported, then it can immediately be rectified. I know what it's like to be in a school that is not clean, doesn't have paper, doesn't have bathroom paper, doesn't have paper towels, and have bought them myself for my students. And so for us to really get through this COVID-19 thing, I know that there's a lot of apprehension that if it wasn't clean before, how can they possibly get enough people and resources? But I have confidence in the district that that is exactly what can be done because there's been a tremendous amount of planning. If I would have to see it to believe it, that it wouldn't work. I really believe that after reading the program and the plan that has been set forth by the district, that we can look forward to seeing a different situation this year. Thank you.
Scott, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to tack on to what Miska was saying. I agree with her. This has been a highly debated issue on the board. We are very aware and we are very concerned. So I'm not going to rehash all the great points that were already made. I do want to bring up, one of the issues that we have is our vendors don't pay a decent wage. And we are prohibited by state law of requiring, say, a vendor to pay $15 an hour. We're not allowed to do that. But therein lies the problem, is they pay low wages. And particularly out here in Cordova, it's hard to get somebody for $8.50 an hour who maybe lives in another area to drive all the way out here at that low rate. So we can't require it, but we need to put pressure on our vendors that they need to pay a decent wage and so that they can hire people who know what they're doing and take pride in their work and keep our schools clean. Thank you.
All right, we have time for one more question, if you could, Brianna.
This is from Facebook to Scott and Miska. What have you done to promote social, emotional health in our students, schools, community during your tenure?
Either one of you can go.
Yeah. I guess I'll go first. Great question. Number one is just making sure that we became a trauma-responsive school district. That's out of the gate, one of the things a colleague, Stephanie Love, brought a resolution for and supported that, and making sure that the district follow up, making sure they're doing the work. The other aspect of it, as I mentioned in an earlier conversation or answer, was making sure everyone is trained on ACES. You know, that's very important as we think about in order to do the work. And then, as I mentioned before, advocating at every funding body possible around why the dollars are needed there to be able to have the people in place to do the work. I mentioned earlier in another conversation, or the answer around, also talking about community partnerships. There are a lot of people out here that are doing the work. Whenever I'm in a conversation with district staff around making sure that we're holding partnerships at the highest way that we can, is making sure that we're asking for what it is that we need. So I am happy to say that that is a lot of the work that I've done in the past four years and this past term, and will continue to do that work. That is something that I think about when you talk about educating the whole child. If we can't get the whole child, think about it as educating the whole child, then we're not doing all of the work that we should be doing. Thank you.
I think, Miska, I deferred to my chairman because she is really one of the top advocates on this subject, along with Stephanie Love. And I agree with everything that she says, that what we have done and we've brought before the board, it's an issue that we're well aware of and we continue to work on. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you all for such a great discussion. I'm going to turn it over to Caroline now to close this out. And thank you so much, Brianna, for your wonderful moderating there with the questions.
Thank you so much, Brianna. We really appreciate it. You did a great job. I want to say thank you to the candidates. Thank you so much for your time. It's meaningful and valuable. And I'm proud for all of the attendees who stuck with us on this call. We know long Zoom calls are difficult. And thank you to our Facebook Live audiences as well. Be looking for an email from Chalkbeat for feedback from tonight's events, resources from us as you all prepare to go out and vote in a virtual, kind of, I'm an informed voter sticker that will allow you to share it on Facebook and be just kind of, we would have rather have given you a sticker in person, but it's a cute thing to share on social media. We encourage you to do so. So look out for that email. We'll also include links to the videos, not just from tonight's forum that you can share with folks who couldn't make it, but also Thursday night's forum, districts two, three, and four. So with that, I'll say have a great night. We'll end our time together, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, candidates.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye. Go out and vote, people. We'll see you later.